Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, just a quick.
Sorry.
Yes. We. That dropped from New York State yesterday afternoon.
I've D. Five D.
Yes.
If I be, I'm sorry. All right, then we need a motion to approve the agenda with the change. Motion by Barb. Second by Mag. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain. Motion carried. And our capital project update, these is 3.4 and three or 3.3 and 3.4.
Great, thank you. So at this time, for members of the board and members of the community joining on Facebook Live and Zoom, we have representatives from Turner Construction, our construction management firm, representatives from Stiegelt, Snyder, and Labella are architects for Phase 3.3 and 3.4, and representatives from Hadley Associates who are assisting us with some additional design elements. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Matt Sikora from Turner.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen here. Hopefully, it comes across where you guys can see the PowerPoint that typically is shown. What's everybody looking at right now? You should see Vets Park. If I could just get a thumbs up or not, or, okay, perfect. So first and foremost, congratulations on opening the park. It was a very beautiful ceremony with everyone there, up until the point when it rained. But everyone seemed to exit field right and head out for cover. What we have tonight is basically an update on that closeout status for 3.2. Jeff is here tonight with Stiegelt as well, and he's gonna get into some of the design pieces for where they are. But right now, our closeout update for the project, here's a couple shots Julian put in. Basically, we have a lot of punch lists to do from a lawn standpoint. I think if you were there, the weather in April didn't really help to create the most ideal condition and way to put that sod or seed down. So as spring goes on, Lakeshore knows they're gonna have to come out and touch some areas up, and we're kind of waiting to see what takes and where those areas need to be addressed, really show themselves. From a closeout standpoint, these are all the contractors that were open for Vets Park. When you look at the overall process, we're about 75% complete. There was a 330 total items, 336. We've closed 260 of those, and we have about 76 items remaining. One of the biggest trades is H&amp;K General Trades, because they have little bit parts and pieces just about everywhere. Schuler Haas has a few items they're working on. Dan Clayton, the Bleachers, has theirs as well, coming in at 10. We do have some issues that they need to clean up and rectify before we close their contract. And lastly, Lakeshore. But everyone's walk through at this point. Hunt, I know we've had the district through Julian's asked for that, so I think everyone's had their eyes on the facility, and we've documented everything that has been requested to be addressed and fixed, along with a couple other items that came up through the through the recent use of the space with the bathroom lock set and so forth. The closeout submittals, this is what Rich will get to turn over to the job, so he knows what was used, what different vendors are there within Lakeshore, H&amp;K, and all the contractors included. This isn't as far along, we're only 24% complete. But just turning that field over at the end of April, I'm pleased with the percentage where we're at right now. Schuler Haas and the large General Trades Plumbing, HVAC, and the site work have a bulk of the work to submit here. This will be all the closeout information that I would expect be in by the end of June, no later than the end of June, so we can close this out complete. Questions with the submittal status for closeout? Okay. I'm gonna introduce to you Jeff, who you've seen before, and he's gonna take it from here. Jeff, with me driving, if you just give me a nod or tell me to go to the next slide, I'll move you along as we drive here. Jeff, do you want to take it away?
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, Matt. Thank you for having us here today. It's exciting to kind of show where we've made some progress on the design. Matt, you can go to the next slide. Okay. So starting with Prospect, what we've done is we've been out to the school multiple times. We're actually gonna be out there again this Thursday coming up to look at some existing conditions. We've gone through a programming exercise where we pretty much asked a lot of questions about, you know, what is needed, what is, what works, what doesn't work? Where are the deficiencies of space? You know, how does circulation work for the students? You know, how do they go from space to space? So that was really the first step, to really understand the building as best we could. That actually took an initial meeting, and then we walked through with the principal, the entire building, looked in every single space to really understand, you know, how Prospect functions. Then we went through a series of studies to explore options. We kind of keyed in on two things. One was an addition off the front of the building. So on the left, where you see addition concept A, you see the yellow square. So that was one area where we started to think about maybe the proper spot for an addition. And then in addition concept B, we looked to connect what several people have been calling the fingers, or the three corridors, with a single addition that would connect them. What we had come to find out during the program, programming, is that several spaces, classroom spaces, were being used for student support, things like math or help, tutoring, teaching assistance, those kind of things. So that kind of played into this as well. We started to evaluate, how many classrooms do we really need? If we take space things and move them around and turn classrooms back into classrooms. So on the left, addition concept A, we started to realize this was a very straightforward way to not only address the space needs, but also affect the front of the building in a positive way, and improve the look of the front of the building. We also realized it was highly constructable. When we reviewed this with the principal, the last thing we realized is if we did an addition off the front, the three classroom quarters would be dedicated to classrooms, and we'd have very little student activity in those corridors, except to go to and from their classrooms. So these all turned out to be positives. Addition concept B, which is where we started, even in our interview, was to connect the three corridors, create additional space off that corridor. And we started to realize that that was becoming a very large addition. We also realized we were connecting the building in three spots, which was tough. And lastly, we were creating two courtyards, which are just not ideal for exiting and egress. If I exit a classroom into a courtyard, I need to somehow go back into the building to get out of that courtyard. And although they work in many scenarios, we started to realize that we probably had a better option with addition A. And that's where the group started to gravitate to. Okay, Matt. I'm gonna zoom in after this slide, and you'll see a little more. But I want to point something out here. Where we see the reddish color all on the front of the building and the yellow color, we're seeing where the majority of the students have to go for shared things, like gymnasium, the nurse, the office, the library, the cafeteria, and our addition. So we really started to gravitate towards this for that reason as well, just seeing how all the students can come down, hit the front of the building for all those shared activities, and then go back to the very quiet classroom wings. Good, Matt. So where we are right now on the floor plan is really schematic design. So the addition includes a steam room and a central culture space. It includes a large academic support space that can house our math, our academic assistance, reading, all those kind of support spaces. Then we had started to hear a lot from the principal and from the group about purposeful play, and creating another space where students can play outside, learn outside the box through play. You know, think very small scale, strong museum type idea where you can take out an activity, work on that. A teacher can interact with you as you do it. And honestly, this was a little new to us, and then we started reading about it even on SED's website, and realized that it's something, you know, a really strong idea, and we were able to incorporate that into the space as well. So the floor plan really started to take shape off the front of the building. Last, Matt, to go forward one. Okay, so now we started to look at ideas for the addition in terms of its look. Across the front of the building, all the way in the distance, you can see the gym box, and then you could see the existing cafeteria auditorium slash gym space in the middle. And then all the way to the left and the side, you see our addition starting to take form. So the big windows you see there are looking into the central culture space where we want to bring a lot of natural light inviting for the students. And then what we're starting to see across the top is, all, everybody familiar with the building knows that the front of the building is got our deliveries, there's a generator, some, there's some other things going on in the front of the building. And we started thinking about a screen element that might look like a weaved wood element that would go across and over that space and connect the big volumes. And Matt, if you go forward one more, I think that really kind of shows it best. So looking at the facade of the building here, existing to the right blank brick facade where we put the new signage in the middle, the existing facade of the gym cafeteria space, gym cafeteria auditorium space. And then this new kind of sculptural element that we're playing with and looking at different colors, it'll be inviting the students. And then far on in the distance on this rendering, you're seeing our addition. So this is where we are today in terms of exploring different forms and different ideas for the addition. Now, does anybody want me to stop and ask any questions, so we can ask questions about Prospect, or you want me to go through the high school first? I'll just keep going, okay. Okay, with the high school, we started to focus initially on the programming for the admin. Matt, you can go to the next slide, sorry. Which is near the bottom of the plan, and then we also started thinking about the teal band that runs around the building that doesn't really go with the direction of where your latest additions have gone. We started thinking, looking at a couple classrooms that needed minor renovations. And then there's some receiving space that needs some work as well. So we started to really jump into all that at once. Again, very similar to the other, to Prospect, we went out and walked through the entire building, got familiar with everything before we really got started. And then one of the first things we did, because it is the biggest part of this, this building project, is start to understand the program for the admin. And we did a full programming exercise where we it, we had to spend a lot of time with the admin staff and understand every single staff member, what, you know, who they relate to, who they work with, where they should be by, what they need. Should they be near copiers or storage or entrances? And we really got a good feel for how their program works. We even started to identify things they don't have that they should have. So we really went through the whole program and started with that before we even put a pencil on the paper to start looking at a solution. Okay, now we started having fun. We started looking at different concepts for additions. These are just four of, there had to be at least 12 of these that we kind of went through with the group, which was, you know, pretty exciting. We had a great time actually kind of doing this and going through different iterations, and every time we were learning something new or different about where something should go or shouldn't go. And what we did is on the left, you'll see the diagram with the red dashes. Those were literally just departments. We said, well, you know, should PPS be next to this, or should the superintendent be near here? And we just did those first. And then on the right, you can see, we developed the floor plans, and we started looking at, you know, what do those spaces look like when they all start coming together? Okay. And then we got close to what we're calling the preferred concept here for the addition after those other iterations. And what we do here is we take the space of the existing admin, which is really about three or four classrooms total. And we divide that up to address some of the spaces that we need, and then we do an addition off the side of that with a new entrance. We talked a lot about security and how you come to this addition, you know, who's coming here? Why are they coming here? Who do they have to see? So what we ended up with is a vestibule with two shit, with two entrances off of it. One into PPS where we have a lot of CTE meetings and, you know, a lot of visitors. So that worked out great for them. They're gonna have their own dedicated entrances. They bring people in and out in a waiting area for them, for, for those people. Right now, a parent or child coming to a PPS has to come into the high school, go down a corridor, possibly interact with students who might be in the corridor. This is definitely a more ideal solution. Then we have a dedicated entrance into the admin. So any visitor coming to the admin can easily come through that entrance and go to the conference room or an office where they're gonna meet with staff. We also have a small security desk there where if you're coming in for something simple, you know, say a job application or deliver some paperwork or anything that, you know, really doesn't require you to come in the building, we can do that right at the window, and there's no need to come into the, the general building area. One thing we heard the most by far from the group was, you know, and I really got it from looking at their existing space, is they wanted to be more open. Right now, you know, to go from maybe Karen's office to Bob's office, I have to traverse all the way through, you know, several other people's work areas. That's one kind of open, but it's not the open that we wanted. It's really that, that's really where you're kind of disturbing people as you kind of work, walk through. So we started looking at conference rooms and different things that could be open, have glass, bring natural light into the space, and really create a exciting work environment for the admin staff of the district. And the yellow space right in the middle addition where you can see a table, hopefully you guys can see that. That's predominantly glass, and so we're really trying to just, you know, really open things up and create a very exciting, open environment. This is where design's going right now for offices. We still have all of our dedicated offices where doors, we can shut them, and we can, you can concentrate on our work. But we had that opportunity to go out and circulate and work with other people on the staff and bring visitors in to do that with us. Next slide, Matt, I'm ready. Okay. So this is the addition massing where we're at today. So just in terms of materials, I've approached the high school more often from the back, I'll call it Riverside. And I'm, I see the additions, and then I see the teal band, and we have a lot going on. So we started right off the bat and said, well, we have a palette here that definitely works. We have a red brick, we have a gray brick, we have panels. We have gray, black, there's red. So there's a lot of stuff to work with, and we just gotta bring it all together. So this is where we started. We have a brick one-story addition that butts right up to the existing building. It has a canopy that is actually also the firewall, so where we see, so it looks like someone walking into the building there. That little piece of wall that sticks out is creates a firewall for us, which is required by code. But we worked that into the canopy design and make it a single element, which we thought was, again, exciting. And then to the left of that person walking in the building, we're seeing what looks like a gray panel in the distance. That's actually existing building. And we were gonna, where there's kind of a sign that's in bad shape there right now, we have to punch windows in there to get natural light into some offices, and we thought we'd re-clad that area to create a break between the high school and the admin. When I drive in and I look at this building, I'm gonna instantly know, well, that's one thing, and that's another. And then once I get closer, I'm gonna see, okay, well, that's the admin building, because there's signage for admin building, and the other buildings are high schools. So we wanted to start to identify where we're going as we enter the site. Lastly, I think the most exciting part of the addition may be on top of the roof there. We have a clear story window. We thought it'd be great to maybe introduce a glue lamp structure just on that clear story as well. It looks really nice in the steam addition, you know, brings those natural materials that we see, you know, in, in nature, even down there in terms of the wood look, and we thought that'd be really nice, and that brings a lot of natural light in for the admin staff. Next one, Matt? Okay, this is the last image I'm showing of the addition today. This is the opposite direction. And we're seeing a few things here. We can see that gray panel a little better, where I said we're gonna have a little bit of a break between the brick. Existing to the left, new to the right. And again, using the same palette of materials that are on the building already, we're not gonna introduce a lot of new materials here. We wanna kind of be respectful of those colors and not try to, you know, be totally different from what's on the building. And then a little bit of excitement here on the left, something that we just started looking at with the staff in the district admin. We have the teal band running around the building, which I think everybody should know about. We started looking, not just ideas of taking the teal off and putting on gray, or putting on red, or putting on, you know, whatever color. You know, one thing that we really started to realize, looking at that L shape, I'll, I'll call it the L shape when we enter the high school parking lot, is that there's almost no depth to the facade. It's very flat. The brick is flat, the panels are flat, the windows are flat, so we have a very flat facade. So here, we started playing around with maybe a very simple one foot maybe sun shade element that would run around above the windows. It'll create some shadows. It'll let us introduce some color, be it red or gray or whatever color we decide on, or not we decide on, the district decides now, of course. But gives us that opportunity to definitely inject some color, some depth, and get away from the flatness of that facade and that teal that, you know, I heard a lot about, and I definitely realized, you know, that, you know, we wanted to go, and we wanted to look great, so. So this is where we're at on the high school addition for admin. Last slide, Matt, is gonna be athletics. We have had wonderful feedback from the district on athletics. You know, we, it's probably our biggest group that we've had on Zoom and Microsoft Teams. We've had coaches, athletic directors, we've had Rich, we've had the admin. We've had input from a lot of people, and I think that we're definitely going in the right direction here. We ended up working on the track design, figuring out how the eight lane tracks gonna work, exactly how it's gonna fit. We looked at the throw events. We looked at how that could fit into where the former tennis courts were. We looked at the tennis court design and how that ties to the, to the building, how it fits into the site. And then at the same time, we're out, we're looking at existing information, like the unique thing with this project is the geothermal wells. So we want to know where those are, so that we're not making choices that's gonna impact that. We want to make sure we make the right choices and, and, and help the budget versus trying to reinvent the wheel. So we were able to really come up, I think, with the right layout for the track. At this point in time, with the group, where we are, we're just evaluating what we'll call the support structure. You know, things like where are the concessions, where are the toilets, how do they fit in? Do we use the former Greer building and fix that up? Do we build a little building? You know, do we use a piece of the bus garage to get that started? Those are all things that we're literally evaluating last week and into this week, and it's kind of the last, I'll call it major item that we're looking at related to the track and this piece of the project. And we're, we think that within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that figured out, all the different options. And it really comes down to a couple of things, you know, if we use the bus garage, do we want our spectators going all the way over there where the athletes are? Should they be separated in a small structure? What's the cost difference between doing that and just using the bus garage building? Can we use the Greer building? You know, it's a structure that's structurally, structurally sound, it doesn't look great, but anything can be fixed. So do we look, look at that? So there's a few different options there, all of which we're starting to study. Like I said, our team is excited to look at those. And the last thing I'll point out, we do have a small parking area that we're showing just to the left and of the track, kind of between right near those properties that you've acquired to kind of make this project work even better. That was quite, that was quite a bit there, guys. Hopefully I didn't put anybody to sleep. We're, so right now, just, I'm just gonna finish with this. We just sent a set of drawings to Turner on Friday of where we're at, so they can start looking at it for estimating. We had a great call with Turner this morning, went through our drawings and their questions, so we can start to get that stuff and information to Turner and their, their, their team. So that's all, all very good info coming along. Matt and Superintendent and I talked yesterday on schedule, so we kind of start to think about that and locking in when we can get documents done to make sure we're getting in the ground at the right time. So this is where we are in schematic design. We think we're progressing well. Always open to critique and things can always change as we go through design development, which is the next phase, and we keep developing the design. But, you know, definitely think we're in the right direction. We've looked at a lot of options, we've had a lot of feedback, and hopefully everyone who's been involved from the district is excited about it and pleased with the process.
So to Bob and the Board of Education, I think that's the last slide Jeff had for tonight before we give Hadley the floor. Questions on what you saw? We talked about what Jeff presented tonight before we shift gears and give it to Hadley?
I don't know. The ones that's on there. Can, can you email us that presentation?
Yep. I'll send it to, to Bob and Karen and Mark right now. Actually, I'll send it to the Finance Committee, and that way it'll go to some of the board members. If you just pass it around, you'll have it. T-Rex?
Okay.
Matt, why don't you send it to me, and then I'll print it up real quick?
Okay. Fair enough. Any other questions and just a copy?
It's just a lot to take in, so.
There is, there's a lot there.
I know. Nice to look at it for a little bit first, and then we probably will have more questions, I'm sure.
Okay, well, we, we have a couple weeks here as we pull together pricing, so if you have questions, there's certainly opportunity to get back around the table, have those discussions, get with Jeff, hear your concerns, and begin to address them, listen, and see how we can accomplish what you're looking for.
Matt and Jeff, just a comment to highlight something. Before, started talking concept. I always want to commend the, the staff from Turner, Julian in particular, who was at those meetings, and Jeff Klotzer and his staff, and particularly Delia. Before we even got to concepts, they drilled us on questions, which is a whole different concept from what we've had previously. We went through and we counted bodies, and then we recounted bodies, and we recounted bodies probably a third or fourth time. And before we even got to the point of a design or discussion about aesthetics, the, the staff with Jeff and his crew made sure that they had as much information from us, and then followed up in writing with us so that we could review it. That has made this process from a district perspective far more efficient and focused. And where we end up with the designs and, and, and the ultimate building and submittals to state ed, I, I think we're in a much better position to eliminate the substantial change orders that we had in Phase 1 and 2, and then 3.1 and 3.2.
Yeah, I know we've, we've given our group a lot of the past history, you know, Jeff, one of the things that our estimate will have further than most at this phase is the knowledge of what's there before, where Jeff has a schematic drawing, but we know that that office space that we're relocating electrical panels, we know the structure that's there. We're familiar with the geothermal wells at the field. You know, Steve put them in in '08, I think it was. I still have the drawings in my office, so all that information will, will help us really be accurate with what needs to come.
Okay. So. Anybody else? Any comments?
At this juncture, we're gonna shift gears and Ted, are you on?
Yep, we're here.
Are you guys able to share to present your stuff? There you go.
Can you see it?
Yes.
See if I can get a little bigger. Here we go.
Ted, the floor is yours.
Oh, great. Good evening, everybody. Hope this finds everyone well. I'm just gonna, I don't know how long it's gonna take me to go through the book, so I'm just gonna go through the book, and if there's any questions or comments, we can certainly go back in the pages and check them out. Certainly go back in the pages and check them out. And this has been an absolute privilege to work on. I have a passion and a reverence for how children use spaces. Get right started into page number three. We've addressed the facade and knowing that Stiglitz and Snyder is proposing three dimensional elements to the facade. We're just proposing that maybe just a solid color in the interim might be the best solution currently. Talking about the. And then we have the light posts that we're hanging banners on. And they could be individualized and they could all be different or you could have them all the same and they could be of multiple patterns. Those are. Decisions you can make further down the line, but in these images, we're just showing you that they can be addressed. On this page, we're showing a different treatment to the entrance. Again, these are for placement only. And the, the pattern on the ceiling of the archway. We're thinking of having changeable banners on the columns and we've added bench, we have bench seating. And we're suggesting that maybe some unique and innovative bike racks could be done. So we're looking at the banners and I understand that you do not have the ability to do the double banner currently. But it was liked enough that we kept it into the book in case you decide to do that going forward. And these would be interchangeable as well and printed in-house.
Yeah, this is something the students actually could do and change.
And we're addressing here the entering structures. And this design was chosen to move ahead with and. That they liked this design and there was some questioning on whether it could be changed for its physical footprint for very specific areas. So. The five arrows obviously being the, the strength and unity and this would be constructed out of steel and river rock and concrete. And it can be designed to any specific size for a location that you've intended it for.
Right now, we had this discussion the other day and, and so this is still pretty preliminary. But we, we talked about the, the opportunity of maybe putting this at the end of Iroquois Drive. And the drawing on the left. We, we probably would, we'd want to talk about the, the schools to the left, but all the parking and then veterans parked to the right.
This is another approach for the entrance ways. On the left-hand side, you're seeing a much larger structure where vehicles could go through. You'd see a slimy, tiny. Marking of a, of the size of someone standing next to it, so you can get a sense of scale. And then at the bottom, you can see there would be, there could be smaller versions that would strictly be for walking here.
So, so these would come, the, the smaller ones would be over by the entrance from the high school, from the walkway from the high, high school in. You'll see in the bottom right, the red dot, I can't remember the name of the street on the back, but that's the back entrance. That's the big sign up on the left side. That's high enough and big enough for a truck, semi-truck to go through. And then the other entrance, we were talking about possibly also having one at the entrance of the school parking lot.
And here we're showing the wayfinding for the sports complex and we're showing two different. Directions and they can certainly be modified, changed and discussed. There were some discussions about how we might change, what event is happening on these structures. And it was suggested that maybe they could turn and we found some issues with that, that. Would have to be much deeper to have the three different sports, the soccer, lacrosse and football. And we came up with another idea that, and, and if it was turnable and. You could still see the other sports from another side, so it would really depend on your direction of where you're walking up to it, that you'd see a sports. You couldn't just have. A very specific sport showing at one time. So we came up with a solution where you would actually slide. Something over to, to reveal just one sport. And then you'd only see that one, no matter which direction you were coming in and obviously baseball would not change. And these are, are made of river, of, of rock, aluminum. And a painted surface. So here we're getting into wayfinding and identifying the levels of school. These are just concepts. And the ones on the left, as are the ones on the right depicting elementary school, intermediate school and high school. We're introducing the multi-level wayfinding approach to accommodate multiple learning styles and capabilities. This, each hallway would have a number, a name, a color and a shape. So if you couldn't remember the name of the hallway you were supposed to be in, you might remember the color depending on how your, how your brain works. We used trees to identify each hallway. They give very diverse and teachable opportunity. To use the trees and the trees that we would choose would certainly be indigenous trees. This is showing our color palette for the hallways. I'm suggesting color palette. And these are showing each hall will have a floor to ceiling panel depicting which hallway you're in. The maple hallway, which would have a maple leaf and it would show the rooms in that hallway. So there would be an introduction on either end of each hallway to identify where you are.
And then throughout the hallways, as you'll see, there will be, the maple hallway would have maple trees. So as you live within this school, you'll learn about the trees. That are out in nature, in the woods here and be able to identify.
The maps would be treated the same way in their size and scale and we're just proposing that. The pattern that's on these, unless they were just solid red, would be actually routed patterns. So they're showing a gray there, but it would actually be a routed red on red and it could be any pattern possible. This is just for placement only.
A dimensional, so.
Very dimensional. So next we're going into hallway suggestions. As you enter the school. There's a mural behind the case. Of a grayscale landscape that would actually extend beyond and go across the walls and into the corners. And you can certainly see the, the wayfinding panels.
And whatever is, you know, in this, in the display case, that could be changeable.
Exactly, the, the, the display cases, um, it can be rotated out. And if you notice too on the walls. We've brought in the tile that you see in the steam section of your school. In the case there, we're showing a framed image of this. Of a eagle feather and what its meaning is to the center.
We're also highlighting the logo of the school with the name.
In this hallway, we're depicting. One of the ideas where we're continuing that grayscale landscape, which so beautifully ties in with your color schemes. And the three benches that are there in option one. They could either be the grow strong together. They could also introduce your strategic plan where. The one on the left would depict the journey of the warrior for elementary, the center one, just so that. If I'm in that hallway as a parent or a caregiver or student and I read that there's a cohesiveness in this entire school district. From kindergarten to 12th grade of your strategic plan and I would be able to read what, what each of these elements mean. And. And be connected to them. And then on the other side, the veterans panel is still there. And to tie in with the journey of the warrior, there's a panel for students to have their quotes. It could be anonymous. But it could be what, what it means to be a warrior to me. So it could say, I'm a warrior because I helped my mom. It could be a, a number of things, but that would be permanent.
And the, the image on the right, that's removing all the casework that's there now with all the trophies and moving it down the hallway. Across from where the cafeteria is.
We understood that that particular hallway needed more room because of the congestion from the gym and the auditorium. This is just another version. This is option two of the same exact hallway. This is just a simpler treatment. This is another idea for hallways. On the left, we're just depicting very large graphics to define the hallway that you're in. On the right, there's, we're using the cases to define storytelling that would have local significance through art. And object. They could be rotated out, but certainly they could be semi-permanent in what you display in these cases.
The intent with the cases is to tell stories and to make them so they're not necessarily. If you want to leave that case intact for five years or 10 years, you could.
And they would be storytelling and they would be educational.
Now, the, the image on the left, there's, this would be a hallway where maybe science classes are. But we know that they do, the classes change, so we'd be cognizant of the imagery that would be in the hallways. That would match the type of classes that would be there.
We're going to show a little bit later, object imagery that can be used as well. Here's one of the, the hallways where the students would have class. And we're showing the signage that floor to ceiling and just an option where the, the color would actually move across the ceiling and back down the other side. To create almost a framework. You can tell towards the back of the hallway that you see the green going from left to right and across the ceiling. Oh, and if you go back one, there's one little element that we're also adding. If, if you could see the little panel next to the door, those are tack boards for the teachers to use. To notify students if the classrooms have changed and so on. And that little brown strip that you see is actually the bark. Of the oak tree. So the children are learning the shape of the leaf, the color of the tree and the, and the texture of the bark. This is just another treatment of what a hallway might look like.
There's several different ways of approaching graphics on the, the lockers. One is you can direct, you can take all the locker faces off, direct print them, you can put vinyl on them, but there's a new. A, a brand new technology out where you literally will put a track down on that floor. And the inkjet printer will actually run down the hallway back and forth and actually print the graphic directly on the walls. And directly on the lockers. So, yeah, so that's, it's very durable, but we've put this type of graphics in museums all the time. And they're highly touchable.
This next hallway that we're showing, option one is smaller towards the center of the page. Just a very simple treatment, keeping the child, the children have already made some artwork up above. This artwork, whether it's used, if it's not used, it's not going away. If it's not going to be used in this particular hallway, we will make digital imagery of it and reproduce it. So it can be moved, but it will, it will not go away. It's important to keep the children's work. And this option two. Is pretty self-explanatory. The Three Sisters Cafe will have black and, black line drawings. To depict the story of the three sisters moving down the hallway. And that wall is, is just a, a, there's no tile on that wall. It's just graphics right onto a drywall. This is just same idea, just a different version. It was mentioned that this is where a lot of children line up. And there's concern about them standing or touching the wall, so we ran the tile down the wall and moved the imagery above. And on opposite side of this hallway. Whether any of these ideas were used, the other side could be the hall of records.
And this is where we would repurpose the, well, we wouldn't repurpose the cases that you currently have. We would suggest a new case system that would be used here.
And this tie, this hallway is on the way to the pool. We understand that it's, it's fairly not. Heavily trafficked and a very simple wall treatment in this hallway in your school colors might suffice. And just be fun to walk down the hallway. This hallway is showing, again, your school colors with large graphic landscapes. And there could be anything on the floor at the door. And the skylight can be used to cast a shadow on the floor. And that shadow is just for placement only. That shadow could be of any shape or design. This beautiful hallway, we just added some imagery to. Just add some, some art interest in it. The little drawings you see on the left-hand side, those could be done very large. In the hallways where you may be concerned about classrooms changing. So that these kinds of images that would might speak to any child could just be done very large on the walls. And here we're just suggesting maybe some imagery in that area. You see the, the robot in the window and it might be hard to see at the scale, but there's a little robot climbing. The actual architecture that's in that space. And here we're just showing you a way that the storefront can be treated. And then finally, we're talking about the courtyards outside. Here we're proposing. Some pattern making in the, the, the ground in the brick or the root block or is it. Anyway, some pattern making in the floor and then we're depicting, there's some kind of shading with the. Cell cloth that stretched between the buildings or if you have trees in that space. We're also introducing some ideas for furniture. It was mentioned that this would be a really nice space for children and faculty to go outside and enjoy lunch on a nice day. These are just different shading ideas. And then lastly, there's furniture ideas and I even propose that maybe some students would like to design some furniture for this place outside. Are there any questions from anyone?
You know, we, we know we ran through that pretty quickly. When we went through it the other day, it took us two and a half hours. And this is about half the size of what we showed the other day.
I don't have any questions right now. It's just a lot to take in.
Cause there's an awful lot here.
Yeah.
I'd like to process this a little bit more. Are we going to have the opportunity for more substantial feedback? Cause I have thoughts on it, but I'm not quite ready. Right now.
We'd love to hear that. And we, we're more than willing to come down, sit down and go through it with you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
And we'll, we'll get copies of that. I apologize to the board. When I, we loaded up the presentation, I didn't realize that. Stiglitz portion wasn't attached to the. The upload for the first portion of the presentation. So Jeff, if you can send that to us, I'll get that printed and give that out to the board tonight.
Bob, that's, that should be in your inbox now.
Okay.
He was going through their stuff.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Fortini and Ted and Jeff and Matt and please thank your crew. of diligent workers. This was a lot to process. We appreciate you sharing.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, let's go on to our next item, which is Dr. Beeler.
How's the audio? All right. So let's see, yesterday Governor Cuomo made an announcement that New York State will be following the CDC guidance that lifts the mask mandate in most public settings. Although in New York State, the pre-K through 12 schools, public transportation, homeless shelters, nursing homes, correctional facilities, other healthcare facilities will still maintain masks and have a mask mandate. So the long, the, the short end here, a short story is nothing's really going to be changing for the schools with regard to masks. They will still be required for all of our adults and students when they're on campus. One other just notable incident, within the past 24 hours, we were notified of a preschool student who tested positive yesterday. We have one classroom and a bus of students that are currently quarantined. That also involves two teachers and a bus driver. They, and we anticipate that that quarantine will be lifted for those individuals on May 28th. Unfortunately though, the student has very, very mild symptoms. It was reminiscent of her normal allergies. So that's the good news and there are no other cases that we are aware of or symptoms. Thank you. That's correct. The adults were not vaccinated. The process though, for the county is that they do quarantine them immediately. They will go through and ensure for the, if they were vaccinated, they would then lift that. So there's at least a couple of days. Two of the three adults were not vaccinated. The third one, I don't have information on.
It's your vaccinations, right?
Yes.
Yes.
One more piece. We are offering a vaccination clinic here on Monday for students. So information is out and about. If anyone has questions at home, check our website and feel free to give us a call, but their vaccine will be available onsite. And parents can bring students here or we can also have the students bring consent forms.
What's the age group?
Oh boy. That is going to be 12 and up now. Correct. Thank you, Karen.
I wasn't sure.
My understanding is Pfizer is the only one we will have on the 24th.
If there are questions, you can contact Julie Creed, our nurse manager. That's the best place to start.
Okay. Thank you. But next we have our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mag, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And we have no old business. Our Board of Education reorg meeting will be on July 13th, 2021 at 5:30. So we need a motion to approve the reorg meeting dates. Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. Brad, I'm sorry, motion by Brad. Well, I saw your mouth move and so I just assumed, you know, just kidding. Cause you got your mask on. Okay, sorry. Motion by Brad, second by Dale. Any questions? All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carried. Item B, declare surplus. So we've quite a few old items. So we need a motion to declare all of the attached items surplus. Motion by, motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions? And I looked at the list, but I didn't know what it was. Not sure really. Karen, can you tell us what exactly they all were? No? Okay, then.
Most of the, any of the Lenovo's are computers. The Kajits are hotspots that are inoperable and not working or connecting. Most of it is technological based of being outdated and abused and abused. And it looks like, looks like some printers. I mean, the technology has a certain lifespan and we've certainly gotten our use out of these.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Although I will put a plug in, there is an executive desk there that would go great at a Bill's tailgate party. It's almost ready for a tailgate smash. So.
Okay. So we have a motion by Barb, second by Sue. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item C, our memorial scholarships for the Arlene Bovee donated $150 toward a senior male and a senior female. There's a 300, and that was 300. ECLC is going to pick the, not ECLC, sorry, salt parent committee is going to pick a recipient for a $500 award. And then the Roger and Frances Lord Volunteer Service Award for $100. It is? Okay. Thanks, Sue. Are you? Did I get them all?
Before we do the motion or second, I wanted to know if we can get a clarification on the Cindy Moore Scholarship. It specifically says to a graduating senior. I wanted to know if we can add the word senior or seniors as in one or potentially two individuals to receive the award.
Do we know, so the amount is going to be very every year?
To be determined, yeah.
To be determined. Okay. Okay. I'm fine with that. Is everyone else okay with that? Senior or seniors?
Can I just ask, just for clarification, who's selecting? Is there a separate committee?
I believe there's a committee with the class of 2023 advisors and then several other district staff.
So district staff is going to.
And I believe, I believe they're consulting with Cindy's daughter as well.
Okay, so class of 2023 and district staff.
And I will motion this.
Yeah, and we'll amend it to be in the district staff, be on the selection committee.
And they do have a walkathon and a barbecue fundraiser coming up in June.
Yeah.
At the park.
So we got a motion by Carrie, second by Mag. Are there any other questions? All in favor? Motion by Carrie, second by Mag. All in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstain, motion carried. Then item D is our school calendar. So we need a motion to approve the school calendar amendment to give the 28th office approved day. Motion by Barb, second by Sue. Are there any questions?
Just a quick clarification on the last few days of June, because the Regents exam has been adjusted. We have reached out to the staff, the elementary staff. Dr. Beeler, correct me if I'm wrong, we'll have five half days working back from the last day of school. And 18th is a day of attendance for the district or second.
That's correct. The, so for our students in grades K through seven, the 17th will be a half day. The high school students have an English Regents exam. So only students who will be in for the Regents exam on that Thursday. On Friday, our K through seven students will have a half day. And our eight through 12 students will be in school fully for attendance. On Monday, the same situation, K through seven will have a half day, eight through 12 will be full in attendance. And then the remainder of the school year, so there'll be 19, 20, 21, the 22, 23, and 24 are half days for our K through seven students and Regents exam days for our high school. I may have misspoke, the 17th is not a half day for K through seven. So basically boils down to this, K through seven, last five days are half days. Regents exams start on the 17th, but the 18th and 21st are full day attendance for the high school. If anybody followed that, congratulations. Yes, that's.
This is part of the.
Yeah, right. And I don't have that in front of me. So, you know, I'm counting on my fingers to make sure I got the right day.
We'll make sure that we post it electronically. We'll send out notifications and, but the Regents exam schedule is a challenging issue.
Correct.
Right now, we're just approving the 28th as a non, a student of non-attendance day.
We can change the other ones if we need to.
Yes.
So with that, we have a motion by Barb, second by Sue. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item E is to create positions for food service manager folks and social food service workers. So we need a motion to approve. Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Got that one right. Any questions on these positions? Yeah, Karen, do you want to go through that?
Spoken with the respective collective bargaining agreement organizations about bringing them into their units when, with the salary and benefits. And we'll be talking about that a little bit more detail at the next finance and personnel meetings.
Were there any other questions? So we have a motion by Dale, second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item F is our power school contract. So we need to approve the contract for $17,440 from June 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. So we need a motion for that. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions on the contract? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And then item G is our part usage fee schedule. We need a motion to approve the schedule effective 18th, 2021. Motion by Barb, second by Carrie. Are there any questions on the fee schedule? Comments?
Station, we're new at this with the fee structure. There may be changes in the future, but we'll, we'll start to implement and then we'll go from there based on use.
We have a motion.
We're trying, this is something I would classify as a community service. We won't ever make the money back from fee rental. So this is like allowing the swim team to use the pool or the drama club to use the auditorium. It's part of what we do and, yes.
Any other questions? And we have a motion by Barb, second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried.
That Mr. Morton and Mr. Bartoszak's phone is already ringing.
He's got the form filled out every day. Yeah, I was just gonna say, do we have a memo? Item nine is our personnel consent agenda. And we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. Motion by Mag. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And we have.
We have three individuals here. If I can ask Mrs. McGarrett to start with introductions of Deborah Collins.
Wait for me. So, uh, Ms. Debbie Collins is going to be our new records inventory clerk. She is from Salamaka, is currently in another district right now and is really doing exactly what I want her to do here. So it worked out really, really well. That is, is going to be a very short training period. It's probably going to take it longer to learn where things are than what she needs to do. Um, so we had a, a great interview and we're looking forward to her attending. Welcome aboard, Deb. Hey.
Individual is here tonight. I'm going to start and then I'm going to ask Dr. Beeler to jump in and then also introduce our next appointee. Marcy Brown is being appointed as our Director of Educational Technology and Information Systems. This is retro back to her original appointment date while we were awaiting certification from the state. Marcy has been a wonderful veteran employee of the school district. She has served in a variety of instructional capacities. Her leadership, her efficiencies, her expertise since assuming this role in January has been monumental. She is responsive. She is hardworking. She's personable with staff. She knows a great deal about our institutional history. She knows our strengths. She knows our needs. And she has been a tremendous asset to the district and we're delighted to have her here. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Beeler. If there's anything else he'd like to add or I left out.
Uh, no, I just wanted to actually share my appreciation and respect for the work that she's done since she started in, I believe it was November. There was an awful lot of work to get done moving forward as well as an awful lot of things that needed to be cleaned up. All of that has been done. The technology response time is increased drastically. The number of devices and our dependence upon them is critical for operations. And due to the work that her leadership and her team has done, we're able to meet all of those needs. And what used to be a panic time when things didn't work and then perhaps even potential delays in getting them to work are, is long gone. And as Mr. Brian Stein said, she's very personable, gets along with the staff. She's been with us for a while and this is a new leadership role for her and she's really done a terrific job up to this point.
Would you like to introduce Ms. Scott who is on the call?
Oh, sure. Terrific. Actually, I will talk both about Marion Cornacki and Erin Scott, who are two terrific teachers with us at Seneca. They have decided to step out of the classroom and take on a coaching role. Both of them will be able to contribute significantly to our instructional programming in the role of an instructional coach. And that instructional coach is absolutely critical. We truly believe in supporting the educators and the teachers in our classroom. And sometimes that happens from their peers and it takes a special person to become a peer leader and a peer go-to person. There's a trust and responsibility that they have as a peer colleague. And sometimes that helps and actually frequently that helps more so than I'm going to an administrator. The Marion and Erin have proven themselves as excellent educators. Their professional development that they have accomplished and their ability to deliver it to their colleagues, both formally and informally is outstanding. So we're really looking forward to working with them. They're going to be primarily working and continuing their work at Seneca Intermediate. So it won't be too much of a change for them with regard to location, but will be a new role for them and we welcome them. uh, it won't be too much of a, uh, change for them with regard to location, but will be a new role for them and we welcome them.
Congratulations, everybody, thanks for joining the meeting tonight to be recognized. Okay, next is, uh, our board information, oops, oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I guess you probably want us to do that, huh, Deb? So we need a motion to approve Deb's contract. Motion by Megan, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor, I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thanks. And now item 10 is our board information, we have our enrollment figures, our IEC meeting minutes, capital project phase 3, congratulations card. Um, we talked about the COVID vaccine clinic, first reading and policy 6120, first reading and policy 6150. Um, we did also receive a thank you card, uh, from Patty Crist and her family. And she said, congratulations on a first-class sports facility, athletes can walk onto these fields with continual warrior pride, such an incredible collaboration. Thank you so much for honoring Chuck's, Chuck at Bud's Park, uh, achievements at the opening ceremony with much gratitude Patty Crist and family, so that was really nice. And she also sent a lovely bouquet of flowers to, to the district, so that was really nice. Yeah, would you please? Thank you, and our upcoming events, um, newly approved, May 28th, school will be closed, uh, and 31st. And our next Board of Education meeting will be on the 1st, our Personnel Committee, uh, Committee meeting will be on the 3rd, and Finance will be on the 8th. Uh, the 10th will be the Seneca Nation graduation ceremony, um, held at the museum, the 15th will be our next Board of Education meeting after that. And then, uh, the 20th, the 18th, we're gonna have a Board of Education retreat and then the 25th is graduation. Wow, so. Believe it, and with that, we need a motion to, uh, enter executive session for the purpose of personnel. Motion by Barb, second by Sue, all in favor, I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and if you haven't voted, please get out and vote.
We will be adjourning, uh, executive session and taking action following the closing of polls to accept the results of the election.
Thank you.